Hey folks, we now open up the meeting. So this is the 6:30 Board of Selectments meeting for January 7th, 2019. Our first order of business is to meet with Robert Marshall, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, to review and vote on the memorandum of understanding with Verizon regarding connection between the new police station and the library. So while we were coming before and we had some comments relative to that, it looks like you've answered them.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions for both? I just want to do this. Okay, so with that said, I will move that we vote to approve the memorandum of understanding as drafted and to sign it accordingly.
Oh, second thought.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries if unanimous.
Thank you. I'm glad we can stop meeting like this.
I'll scan this and send it to Peter.
Peter, and I assume Paul trained for Verizon or to whomever.
Well, I'll let you forward it to train.
Oh, okay. All right, fine. And Peter suggested we keep the original for ourselves?
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so our next order of business is to get item number two to discuss Assawamset Pond Complex water levels. Jim, Kenny is here. Thanks, Jim, for coming in. He has provided us with quite a lot of information relative to the circumstances surrounding the pond complex and what's going on with the water levels. We're scheduled to meet with the Middleborough Board of Selectment on Monday, January 14th, 2019.
Oh, yes.
At 7:00 PM. And Jim, are you planning on attending on Monday, this 14th?
I'll certainly be available to attend.
Sure, that would be great. Because I think in reviewing all this information, what I wanted to do was first of all ask if anybody had any questions relative to it, and maybe have you give a brief synopsis of it.
Right.
But I really, in thinking about this, this is a critical issue that will require both towns kind of getting on the same page, and I think you'd be helpful for that discussion on Monday.
Right. It's probably best if someone on the board kind of leads it though, and it's so that it's not, you know, coming from me.
Well, perhaps, but think of it in these terms. I'm happy to play that role, I think all of us are, but it's critical to understand that with this set of circumstances, we as a board have no authority over Middleborough. So we need both towns to work. We actually, we have no authority as a board over any of this because Taunton manages the opening at Assawamset and the dam further downriver, of course, is Middleborough's purview. So this is really, you know, we're there to kind of say, hey, can we work together to try a solution? But I think you being there to maybe give a brief explanation of the research done and the proposed solution, or a proposed solution, would be a heck of a lot more credible than if we're there by ourselves. That's why I'm suggesting it.
No, and that's kind of the spirit with which I kind of pull things together. There's a package, I don't know if people have it in front of them or not.
Yeah, they definitely do.
And so I'm going to suggest I just kind of walk through that a little bit so that you can get some clarity.
Briefly enough, just give the 10,000-foot overview. If you want to get up to that mic, that would be helpful for the Lakeville people.
Okay. So really, the handout has three parts. The first part is just sort of a definition of where I see the water levels relatively high that, you know, I think should be of concern, especially if I put it in a historical context. The second part is basically the meat of what I'm proposing as an idea that would help mitigate flooding around the Assawamset Pond Complex if we do have unusually high water. And then the third section consists of a bunch of photographs of the poor Picton Vaskyl spillway dam that might be worth discussing. I don't think so much for the meeting next week, but maybe to at least give the board a familiarity with what I mean by different settings of the dam and so on. Okay? So let me just start with the very first one, which is this chart. So what this looks at is from 29 to 2018, and it looks at the surface level of Long Pond and the groundwater level that's measured in a well in Lakeville. And the high points, well, first of all, 2018 ordered at the far right side. This was early December, so you can see the surface water was high, certainly the highest in the last six or seven years, and very close to where we were the year before of the flood of 2010 and the year after, in 2011. And the same thing for the groundwater. You can see the high points, three high points. So from a historical context, you know, that was enough for me to say, I think that we have a concern for the coming spring. Recognizing however, that when we had the flood in 2010, we had an enormous amount of, record amount of rain in March. Now, so in 2011, we were going into the 2012 season at the same high water of the surface and the ground essentially, but we didn't have flooding in 2012. It was kind of a normal spring. I would say mostly because there was not that heavy precipitation, but the other thing that was different was that this Vaskyl dam was brought down and held low, at a fairly low elevation, for about a month and a half, as far as I can see, around this very time period in the year. So there's those two things, and so I was kind of looking for that to happen again, but that's not where it is right now.
Right.
And I don't want to get into a lot of discussion, and probably not a good idea next week either, okay?
Yep.
So anyway, that's kind of set the stage. And spending a lot of time going through this, I guess I'd like to sort of direct your attention to the second piece, and there's a couple of handouts, a couple of maps. It really helps me a little bit to set the context. Have you got one that looks like this?
Yes.
Okay, that's the Taunton, you're probably all familiar with this, the Taunton watershed, and you can see our lakes down at the bottom. So that's a pretty good-sized area. And I tried to outline right above the pond complex, so shaded in area, because that's what I'm going to be talking about in this proposal. There's an area of basically the upper Damasket watershed. By that, I mean the area between the dam at the head of Assawamset that Taunton controls and the Vaskyl dam on Wareham Street or something. So I did some research on that, and that area is probably about four times the size of the pond itself. Okay? So, and my proposal is to, oh, and then, I'm sorry, the map before that gives you a closer look at that. So let's maybe make sure you have good orientation. You can see the northern end of Assawamset, the upper Damasket River, and then bringing that down to where the Vaskyl dam is on Wareham Street. So this shaded in area is what I call a potential for a strategic floodplain. All right? And how can we, you know, be proactive and start early in trying to keep the water level in this area as low as possible in the period from about September to January of the year? So that's really kind of the first comment under highlights, and that establishes strategic floodplain, a natural catch basin in this upper Damasket water basin. And start it early because we all know that it's a sluggish watershed. The water does not move through very quickly. If you want to take advantage of being able to use this area in case you do have heavy rain as a place where water can go and not flood back into the lakes, then you've got to start early. All right? So basically, it's asking for allowing extra flow over the Vaskyl dam that we might not otherwise do because maybe we haven't had, there didn't appear to be a need for it, and you know, basically to reduce the water line in the upper watershed area. And then, you know, try to get that spillway at its lowest elevation and hold it there for as long as possible. Now, obviously, consideration, and I'm sure that town of Middleborough would put primary their consideration, you know, the downstream situations that may occur. So you're not going to just lower it in terms of, in times of high water.
Right, yeah, and that's the X factor from their perspective, is that whole thing. Did Mitzi, or maybe really, if somebody is, if there is a dam meeting, is it important to maybe at least provide this information then?
The meeting last month, I brought a packet from Jim.
Okay, so you're aware of this idea of this?
My act is altered as far as.
I don't think I had shared this with you. I think I had shown this plot, okay?
Yes, and.
And I think I had the picture maybe, but I didn't bring.
You had the, actually I have it right here. You gave standard operating procedure recommended for the town of Middleborough. I gave that to Chris Pack.
You know, the multicolored table that said.
Well, listen, my point is, is that the meeting, maybe you can follow up and provide them with this as a more comprehensive strategy and go over it, because, you know, I think the more people we communicate this to, the better it is, especially in advance of next Monday.
Right, and it's very simple, you know, which I think is perfect because you kind of put it together such that it, you really look at it and you say, look, we have two variables that look identical coming into the spring. We know that there's two other variables that we have, which is really the lowering of the Vaskyl dam and the rainfall that we had in March. So we don't know if we don't have the rainfall in March, it's very likely that nothing may happen, you know, but we also have no idea. You know, it could be a combination, nobody's really sure, but these are the set of circumstances by which we had it with this set of circumstances, and this happened, and we had it in this year, in 2011, going into '12, and this happened.
That's right.
So therefore, we have the same set of circumstances. We have no idea what's going to happen when we get to 2019 in the spring, because we have the rain. We only have control over one thing.
And with the dam, with the dam up, in half the rain, you could have flooding.
Right.
Right? We don't know what that ratio is, so, yeah.
And the dam may have nothing.
Right, right.
We have no idea.
And I don't go into the slightly saying, just lower the dam.
Right.
You know, there's things that they have to consider. My point is, is that in order to have a fighting chance of this, this has got to start early. That's why, you know, I picked September, maybe even earlier if they want. At the same time, talk to Taunton and have them actually not be aggressive in letting the boards down. In other words, allow Assawamset to keep some volume, because that would then also, not excessive, okay, that would then also allow the upper Damasket to flood out.
Are you over there?
But it's funny too, because going into, was it 2016, where?
Had drought conditions.
Yeah, drought conditions. So I mean, you look at, again, what's helpful is at those dam meetings to see when we have the rainfall on the bottom, so you can see exactly when the rainfall's coming in. But again, that's such an unpredictable variable that you have no idea. You know though, when you're kind of in the range of safety, I guess I would say, what typically is the safe range, where we're at an extreme at this point.
So we are, yeah. And again, just to kind of, for visual, if you take a look at the, it's called 2018 comparison to 2011 photograph, I think some people have seen that already, but perhaps not everyone. And that, that's just looking at almost exact dates of the two years, and gee, we had that dam almost, that's like its completely lowest elevation in 2011, but it's almost all the way fully up in 2018. Now, again, there may be reasons for that. It's not clear to me what they might be, but somehow we've got to wait for it then. And all I can say is that you have to give it time, because the arguments I've heard, and I think they're reasonable, is that if you just lower the dam, all you're going to do is empty the pool that's behind it, and it doesn't have an effect, doesn't have an immediate effect on the Assawamset Pond levels, but it's going to ultimately have an effect, so we've got to start early.
So maybe we want to meet with the board and start setting up white water rafting and lower the dam at the same time, and we'll go.
Yeah, right. Set the dam for white water purposes.
You can catch errand at the same time, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, this is fantastic, working together, you know, just from a comprehensive perspective.
Right. So, yeah, did you have any comments or questions?
No, so I'm clear, is your expectation, I believe this entire package, including the photos, should be handed out to the Middleborough Selectment.
Oh, so I was going to ask.
Presentation.
Oh, yeah. You think so?
We don't want to not.
Yep.
This is our position, as much as we can have.
Right, right.
Again, we don't control.
To suppress something because we think they might get upset, I think, we're given the entire package, and, but is Jim doing the presentation? I believe he should, or do.
Yeah, but we can do an introduction.
Yeah, and say that Jim has been our go-to guy and the numbers guy, whether it be the schools, energy committees, so we just don't think he's focused on this and on this program here. Now, Jim's approach, he's defined a whole new area called the up in Damasket River, which there is no such thing.
Well, actually, if you look it up, you'll find some maps that show that.
Well, right, but it's probably not in existence anymore, I bet, but it's one approach. There's several different approaches of how to, how to lower the water level so that, you know, people have suggested various things, and someone always comes up with a reason why they don't want to do it.
Right.
So it's, to me, it's a good approach to start with, but it can be one of two or three ways to control the water level. I hope that someday, you know, we've always heard and gone to the meetings and said, oh my God, if you lower the dam, it doesn't make any difference. When we say, well, just appease us and lower the dam, they don't do it.
Right, right.
I hope someday, when it comes into disrepair, there is no dam, because most dams have been taken out. If they can be taken out, they're taken out. People don't want to fund the repair of dams. They go back the natural way, and the, and the herring will still come up to mitigate, that is, they don't have to go up the fish line as it's designed in Middleborough. So there's many different approaches. This is just one of the many, but.
But I think this is a reasonable, right, it's a reasonable approach. Present to Middleborough to say, listen, we're concerned about this. Have you considered this? Can we try to work together? And it's up to them to want to try to do that, and all we can do is ask.
I agree with John Rush. Because I believe the stakeholders, as defined in the dam meeting, certainly the stakeholders, I believe, was defined as the New Bedford Water Works and the Taunton Water Works. But the true stakeholders of asset value, not water quality, but asset value, is Long Point and Freetown, Long Point and Freetown and Assawamset, are the flooded areas.
Right.
And there are other programs, but I don't, I don't know that we need to bring those up. But to measure water levels and meet at the dam meeting for eight years and not have come up with some plan, this being one of several variations that you can come up with, I think isn't the right approach. I think whether this is the right approach or some variation of this, I don't care, but something needs to change other than just to measure water levels.
But if I may, when Steve can answer, there were two committees, one to monitor the water levels, and then there was the other committee for long and short-term goals of cleaning up the river. That committee's more or less gone by the wayside. They don't meet anymore on that. They were trying to get money to dredge. We had people from Fish and Wildlife that were trying to get funding. They got promoted, they don't come to the meetings anymore. So the long-term strategy committee does not meet anymore. It's really just monitoring the water levels. That's what it's come down.
Yeah, so the well, the lead the well?
Yes.
Well, that's the moved well now too. So that's the other issue too that we have, which is that when we had to move the monitoring well from the hospital property to Eastern Bank, so we're not getting the exact same numbers that we have before, so, well, it's, it's significant enough, it's significantly close enough to assume that, you know, it probably wasn't.
Groundwater.
Yeah, the groundwater's extremely high.
It's everywhere.
Right, and I mean, that's the biggest driver that everybody can see.
Right, right. I hope that no one tries to, what I call, dispute them. I think it's, I think that they've got to be willing to do a standard operating procedure of operation from the head of Assawamset, head of Damasket at Assawamset to the Vaskyl dam.
And the concern they'll have is, well, if we lower the dam, we may flood our residents. If we do nothing, we know that we won't. I think that's the big issue, you know, nobody knows whether this is going to save.
But I think, so my question is, why did they flood people in 2011 when they had it down towards lowest level?
Right. Right, I mean, maybe they did. Maybe it's back, and that's why it's up. I mean, I don't know.
The whole simplistic approach is that I would have expected this to be in the fully down position by November 19th, after the recreation has finished, what I call, in Long Point. But that's just, that's just me. I'll be happy when the dam gets so old it falls down.
Right, but of course, if the pond levels were extremely low, you wouldn't necessarily want to have it all the way down.
You can, right, you can control, right. But there's certain, in the standard operating procedure, it doesn't measure.
Is it going to be in March or not?
No, no, in the standard operating procedure, you have to take measures and say, you know, you pull out three slats at Assawamset when it's at 53 feet, and you pull out X number.
And that may be part of the problem, is that it requires like, if not daily, weekly monitoring and adjustment, right? So if you don't.
Yeah, I would say, not daily.
Right, right. Sure, but I mean, you've got to get these folks that oversee these, these things to get on the same page and agree to a strategy and implement a strategy. And that's really what the challenge is. So, all right, does anybody have any other questions? I think this is great, and I agree, I think this is, is, you know, for lack of a better way of putting it, our strategy to take to Middleborough and say, hey, look, let's, let's try to get behind this, and, you know, can you consider this? Because we were on the verge of a potential emergency situation relative to the pond levels in Lakeville and in Freetown, and we really were hoping for some help.
Yeah, I would say we're at risk, not so much on the verge, but yeah, same, same thing, I guess.
Yeah, I tend to use hyperbole more than I should.
That's all right. Maybe get some more attention.
Yep.
So Aaron, would you like me to send this package to the Board of Selectment in Middleborough ahead of time, so they can have a look at it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. And then in the Selectments packet, I'll have the letter that I sent, asking for the manager.
Yep. Okay, great. All right. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely. All right. Oh, sir, I'm sorry.
Just on the, on the same thing.
Let the folks know your name for the record.
Bob Somoli.
Okay.
I live on Shore Grab and on Long Pond.
Okay.
I talked to Mima, or the director, and I talked to the director, and they said that actually they can't do anything. They're only disaster. If it happens, it happens.
Right.
So then they forwarded me to Bill Somoli, I think. He's the director of DCR, which is the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Yep.
And they have dam safety. They're the dam safety people. Because both people said they couldn't go to any meetings because they can't, it's in their bylaws, they cannot go to any meeting. But Bill was saying that he was going to send one of those guys down to the Taunton Water Works, the dam, inspect the dam, go to Middleborough, talk, and that was supposed to be today.
Okay.
No, today, yeah, today, they were supposed to do it today. I don't know if they did it or not, but, and then I'm just waiting for an email to come back to me, maybe from Bill, to say that, you know.
What was the purpose of the inspection, to see whether it should.
Well, they said, you know, they're talking that they, their dam's safety. So they, they're not on this side of the dam, they're on the outward side of the dam.
Yep.
So that's what their primary thing is to do.
Right.
To protect those 12 houses or whatever's on the Damasket River or whatever, to make sure that they're all right. But he also said that they could have their input on as far as why the levels are up so high, because the dam is being kept up so high. And he says he's going to try to help, so.
Okay.
Just a start anyways.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, if you get any information back from them.
I give it to Tracy.
Yeah.
I'm back and forth with Tracy constantly.
Forward it to Tracy to make sure we get it in advance of the meeting next Monday, that would be great, because if there's something there that we can bring up, we'll do it.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
And Charlie tried, and you indicated this last week, try to go to the Middleborough meeting if you have to.
Yes, I intend to, yeah, I intend to.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, the agenda number three is to revisit what?
Were you here for the pond levels, Dick?
I'm sorry?
Are you here for the discussion? It's all over.
It's all over?
Yeah.
How was the show on, listening?
What?
Wasn't it supposed to start at 7?
6:30.
Oh, I, the word I had was 7.
Richard, I apologize, I gave you 7. You, Richard?
Thought it was 7.
Okay.
You're the one that gave me that.
I'm going to talk if you want to.
All right, so agenda number three is to revisit zoning board of appeals petition for the 57 Long Point Road Island Terrace property. We have some, some information here to review. I wanted to add this on here really for one particular purpose. I wanted to discuss with the board the idea of voting to have town council provide a legal opinion as to whether the zoning board has a legal authority to grant the variance and the special permit that's requested. I think I may have come off, may as a, as a bit of hyperbole, come off a bit heavy-handed when I was at the zoning board, and that really wasn't my intention. My concern is legality of their action. It's not necessarily a problem with the proposed development, although I can honestly say that I really liked Mayor Tommy Hoyer's letter that is advocating for the state to get involved for the purpose of buying the Island Terrace property to make it passive recreational land that would have bought the Bay's neck, and basically would become part of the Bay's neck complex. To me, that's the best idea, to protect the watershed, to protect the beauty of Lakeville, and to really preserve that whole part of town as really, as I see it should be intended. But with that said, if the zoning board has a legal authority to grant a special permit, which in my opinion they don't, and a variance, which in my opinion they don't, but town council agrees that they do, I don't intend on really doing much of anything other than saying to them, it's under your discretion to make the best decision you believe you should make for the town. But I started thinking about this, that that's not something I can do by myself, I'm just one member of a board, and I really would like to, as a board, make that decision, and if we vote to do it, to instruct Amy to provide basically a legal memorandum that outlines the legality of that action. So what are your thoughts on that?
Do you want your opinion to vote on the legal authority of the zoning board of authority to do what?
Grant.
Or not to do what?
To grant the variances, there's two of them at this point, there's probably be more, and a special permit. Those are the two, the two questions of law, honestly, that I think we would want town council to provide us an answer with for the sake of instructing the zoning board. I think the zoning board is in favor of the project, but I don't think that they have undergone the analysis necessary to determine whether they have the legal standing to provide that relief. My concern is that if they provide that relief without the legal standing and nobody challenges that, under operation of law, within 20 days, the, those variances and special permits will be in effect. And then you have this issue of the zoning board providing relief that they didn't legally have the authority to do, and that then becomes the standard by which they get inundated with every ridiculous, non- with every ridiculous, non-intended consequence of that decision. So that's my concern.
Do you?
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, so, I mean, I wanted legal counsel to be at that ZBA meeting, mainly to ensure that things were being done in accordance with the authority that they're granted to have.
Right.
Is anybody actually in a butter that could challenge that decision? Does anybody have standing to challenge that decision?
Sure, yeah, there is a butter.
There are a bunch.
Right, I don't know as if they would, but.
I just wasn't sure if it was or if it was the land.
Well, DEP is something's cranberry box, correct?
So DEP, okay.
But I mean, you know, all the zoning aside, I think all of these letters are interesting too. Even if they do get the zoning board, here's the other thing, even if the zoning board grants a special permit and the variances, they have a major problem with this DEP letter. The DEP has said, you're not going to have the ability to go beyond 15%. And they're looking for a variance to go to 33 or 35. DEP is like, no, we'll let you go to 20 if you jump through certain hoops, but you can't go beyond 15. So right away, they're going to have to come back with a redesign of the whole thing, which means they're going to have to keep going up.
Right.
Which means they're already looking for a height restriction variance, which at this point, if you're going to put the same amount of units on there, you're going to have to build a skyscraper. Well, guess what? You can't put the same amount of units on there because in the DEP letter, it also says that you don't have 13,000 gallons per day. You'd be lucky if you got seven. Or maybe I don't have the numbers right, but.
Oh, you do.
So it restricts it down to, so then you're looking at what, maybe 40, maybe 40 units on there?
Right.
Right? So the whole thing needs to be retooled on the basis of this DEP thing, but my fear with that is, is that the zoning board's going to say, well, that has nothing to do with us, we're just looking at the zoning of it. Well, if you know that the DEP is not going to allow something, why would you, why would you provide the zoning relief requested when it jeopardizes the integrity of your zoning bylaw, knowing that it won't even be able to be implemented?
Yeah, I don't believe.
Like, I think they should have, I think the zoning board should say, go to the Board of Health and get that straightened out first.
It's under the DEP purview, it's not the Board of Health, it's over 13,000 gallons a day, so it falls under the DEP purview, it's not under our Board of Health, so.
It is, it's right here in this letter, from the DEP.
They have, they have, DEP has sole discretion on the 13,000 gallons per day. If you read the Board of Health note from Kevin, you'll see that it's under the purview of the DEP.
Right, but then the DEP says they wouldn't grant a waiver.
Well, that's.
And then it goes back to the Board of Health.
That's all colony developments, that's, that's if in fact the cover reduces to 7,500. So there's lots of issues, but this is, the developers' issues, not our issues.
No, no, I get it, I'm just bringing it up for the sake of saying that I don't think that this project is viable on the basis of this anyway, and I would hate to see the zoning board destroy its credibility on the basis of changing, making a substantial decision that I believe they don't have the legal authority to do, to only see this thing not ever happen anyway, and then you're going to have developers coming in trying to, trying to, you know, these tenuous ties to these ridiculous uses that go back to whatever they can think of. It's going to be, it's going to be bad, in my opinion. So that's what I'm trying to guard.
My question for you then is, do you want town council, because when I read this memo from the attorney who is bringing the petition forward to the ZBA, do you want town council to address the issues listed in the memo?
No, I want town council, I want to provide town council, I want town council to do a legal memorandum of case law to determine whether what they're asking for is legal for the zoning board to approve. Because my understanding of it is, the variances are not, now, the fact that our zoning board didn't go to the training that we had for them, with the exception of Don Foster, but yet they still don't understand to my, or I shouldn't say they don't understand, they don't have the level of understanding I would expect from a zoning board relative to the granting of variances is concerning to me. I want to see in clear legal writing, you know, legal memorandum, here's the issue, here's a case law that supports it, here's my conclusion as to whether they have the authority granted on the variances. Same thing with a special permit. There's a special permit that, based on all the cases I've ever read about this, that you can't get from here to there, you just can't do it. So if they're being led to believe that they can on the basis of the petitioner's attorney's representation, and we don't have town council giving an objective analysis of the legal, the legal authority of the zoning board, we're really operating with blinders on, and that's my point.
I have no problem with town council giving an opinion like that, that's why I wanted town council there in the first place when we had that meeting that happened a couple weeks ago. What I think is important is that if we are similar to the last time that we got slightly more involved, I think, with a ZBA decision, we just want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't know if town council has met with Don Foster to explain this or to go through it. I just don't know the history of what town council has done so far, other than to show up at that meeting. And I don't know if we have any information on what has happened or transpired.
No, and I didn't, and I didn't even, I didn't even talk to town council, I didn't want to do anything until I talked to you guys, because I don't feel that it's appropriate for me to be involved unless they have the authority of the board.
I would, the, there's a lot to this dating back past to the summer, I believe, and you being the lead person, or the chairman, you've been in contact with Amy Questle on these issues right along.
Well, yeah, for the purposes of having her at that meeting.
You've been, well, you've asked her a lot of questions and she's given you, she's given you answers, I would not, I, when you pick what you want an attorney to say, you have to say which side of the fence you're.
No, 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 I am not asking for her to substantiate my opinion, I'm asking her to do an objective legal analysis on a set of, on a set of facts.
I would not do it.
Why not?
Because you still have to, I believe, the direction would be, is if I had an attorney and I would say, give me a letter on how this can work, what are the case laws? Give me another letter, if I wanted to, on what are the problems with this, what are the case laws against it? Because you, you being an attorney, there's X number of case laws for something, there's X number of case laws against something. And I would not ask, I would not ask my attorney to put in writing, I might have conference calls and executive session, but I would not ask an attorney, because I think it is picking your side of the story. You like Mayor Hoyer's letter, I don't. I think, how much, how much would it cost?
John, listen, if we vote to do this, I don't have to talk to Amy, Rita can talk to Amy and explain this. It doesn't, I don't have to.
I wouldn't ask an attorney to do it to begin with. If you take Mayor Hoyer's, because you brought it up, Mayor Hoyer's letter, what would the cost be to the town as an example, if that was purchased? What would you expect to happen with Island Terrace property?
What would it have for tax?
I have no idea, I don't know what that would cost.
You mean to take it off the tax rates and?
Oh, no, demolish it, rip up the septic systems, which are made out of plastic, you have to do all that.
Well, it would have to be state, otherwise what would be the point of doing that?
What would be the point of, what would be the point of doing it to begin with? So you are on one side of the fence, I'm on the opposite side of the fence, and if I was, had a personal legal matter, I would not have my attorney write down, I'd have him give me both sides of the coin. There's always two sides to the coin.
And that's, that's the piece where.
Always two sides.
And that's why, when I look at this, and that's why I asked that original question, if Amy responds to the letter that was provided from the other attorney, it would address those issues where I think we're getting this side of it to say, I do want to make sure that it's legal, what's happening. But then again, if it's a matter of opinion.
Our attorney's sitting there. Our attorney's sitting there representing the town.
Yeah, but if you don't instruct the attorney to do a legal memorandum investigating case law.
Well, my legal memorandum.
Sitting there.
Yeah, my legal memorandum would be, is give me a case law supporting, passing it. Yours would be, give me a case law against it.
No, 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 that's not true, John, what I'm saying is, my memorandum would be, give us an objective analysis, which would take into account both sides.
She's given you that verbally, I believe. Has she? She's given you your opinion, you've talked to her for, on the phone, I believe.
Yeah, but.
Led to believe by Amy.
Her opinion was that, that the variances are not legal. But guess what? If they, if they approve them and nobody challenges it within 20 days, there's constructively granted.
And so what's so bad about that? You think Armageddon, you think Armageddon happens because that's going to happen?
No, 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 I don't, I didn't say that. To me, the, they give illegal variances out all the time.
All the time.
The critical problem is the special permit, because that's the thing that will get tied back to every prior non-conforming use and current use that anybody can dream up.
She's not representative of that.
Right.
So you can do a vote, I certainly would never ask an attorney to do that, not just in this, I wouldn't have him do it.
Well, I think, that's why I go back to a response to the attorney's memo, because the attorney's memo comes at it from a case law perspective, again, it's coming from the other side, that if there is.
Yeah, but that memo isn't, sure, I think that's fair, and I'm totally, I would totally agree with that. I think, yeah, my personal feeling is one thing, but I really want to have the zoning board provided with the best information it has to make the best decision.
That's why we pay an attorney to sit there.
Right, but if you don't instruct the attorney to do the research to ferret out that information, the zoning board's never going to.
My instructions to the attorney would be different than yours, my instructions would be to the attorney, how do we make this, how do we make this work under the current zoning regulations? That would be me. Someone else would say, I want it as open space, give me an opinion how I can get it not to work.
But I don't think that either of those positions are fair.
So, I'm, I'm sitting back, she's at the meeting, we're paying her by the hour.
Right.
She should be, she should be looking out for the best interest of the town, that's her job.
I agree. Mitzi, what's your opinion on it?
I mean, again, I want to make sure that the ZBA had legal representation, so that they're doing things that are not going to have unintended consequences when they're through with them. So from the perspective of the attorney from their side wrote a letter, I have no problem having our attorney look at the letter and say, essentially side by side, where there are weaknesses in the argument, but it's really up to the ZBA to make that decision in the end.
I agree.
So I, I don't, you know, from my perspective as a board member, and I kind of said this from the beginning, it's not my position as a board member to really interject into that board decision. I'm happy to give guidance and I would be happy to say, you know, if Don Foster wants to have legal counsel put this together so they have that information side by side to be able to contemplate that and have a meeting with Amy, where maybe, you know, they're meeting, again, you know, at a meeting prior to when they actually have their next hearing, and they're meeting in public with Amy to discuss this, you know, I think that would be a good step to have as an in-between, so that they can make a decision that they have the authority to do. You know, for me to put something together, I have no problem voting to, I don't even know if it would really be a vote, but recommending to Don Foster to talk to Amy.
No, we need to vote because we can't act without voting, that's what boards do. So to, for me to talk to town council, it's not, I shouldn't be doing that.
So what I mean by that is, the vote, you know, if the vote happens to be to, you know, authorize Don to speak to Amy under the guise of X, Y, and Z, but you're actually asking for us to have Amy create essentially a rebuttal to then be provided to the ZBA.
Right, because the issue with that, and I'm happy to stick within the four corners of that document, because again, I just want objective legal information for them to render a decision. I agree that they're the ones that do it, and as I started with this, and it's important for you to understand this too, I don't intend, I intend on trying to provide them with that information backing off, I don't intend on giving them my personal opinion on what I think they should do or shouldn't do.
You already did that.
Yeah, I know, but I don't, I only did.
Not as a board member, it's a private.
I only did that relative to the variances, I didn't get into the special permit, which is another whole discussion. But I don't intend on doing that because I think, first of all, it shouldn't come from me, it should come from town council. And if town council says, this is okay, then I'm okay with that. And even if town council says it's not okay and they vote to do it, I'm okay with that too. It's their decision and I support that.
He uses town council today. We don't vote to allow him to call town council, he calls town council.
No, what I'm saying is specific, I'm saying I want to vote for town council to provide a legal memorandum in response to the petitioner's information that was provided, and that's it.
I don't. She'll do that anyways, I would assume.
She won't do it.
Well, then, then.
Unless we direct her to it.
I'm not going to direct it to her.
No, no, I understand that, that's okay, but that's what I would like to see happen. Because I think if you stay within the four corners of that, she's only responding to what was provided to her, and it'll come out wherever it comes out.
Yeah, I mean, I did want, again, town council to be there to give an opinion on this memo, essentially, as they were coming to that meeting and they were describing the project. Again, I had to leave that meeting early, but I don't know that, was that ever addressed by town council at all?
I stayed, I stayed at that meeting and there was certain, a lot of things said, oh, the builder can't take the position of Providence, Providence Bank because he's not the owner of the property. Well, that wasn't true for Amy, so there were things said.
That wasn't true per his attorney.
No, that's true for Amy.
And then she looked it up.
You might have left.
No, 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 she, she looked it up.
You might have left. Sure, she looked it up and he could take the position. And you're adamant that he couldn't take the position.
Has anyone talked to Don Foster?
None of that's relevant though, John.
Well, it is, it is.
Because I think what I'm asking.
Because you're trying to sell your side of the story. And I'm not being part of it.
I understand that.
Right. It's your side of the story. What you said there was wrong per Amy, maybe you left and didn't hear it.
No, no, portions of what I said were not correct, according to one case law that that guy cited, that she said, yes, that case exists. It doesn't mean there aren't cases that don't agree with what I was saying.
Exactly, there's cases on both sides of it, and I could even look them up and give you 10 on one side, 10 on the other. We've never done that, I'm not interested in doing that.
So when we issued.
We did the same crap for LeBaron and that forged ahead.
Right, so.
You stood there and said, this is crazy, the builder's making too much money.
Right.
That's a ludicrous reason, ludicrous reason.
Yeah, so I mean, the question I have is, you know, when we were doing LeBaron, did we send, we sent a letter to the ZBA, but it wasn't from the board, I sent a letter myself.
We attended those meetings.
Which was really based upon the 40B profit cap considerations, I call it.
Yeah, but wasn't that a reasonable thing to investigate?
It was investigated without your involvement. It was investigated, absolutely.
All right, but that wasn't my understanding of it.
We posted the meeting to be in attendance because it was significant build, exactly as this was. I was the one that suggested that we talk about it at the meeting, and I was hoping people would go. You can get, Mitzi can give her opinion, I can give mine, you can give yours, we can speak to it from the public. We've not, in the past, voted to get legal opinions, because I'm saying that the legal opinion can be either side, there can be 10 case laws for, 10 case laws against. You ask your attorney to show me the case laws for it if you're.
No, I know that, but my point is, is that if you say, stay within the four corners of that document and give an objective legal analysis as to what, what the case law is that supports the position of the petitioner, so that we can educate the zoning board, that's not asking the attorney to add. so that we can educate the zoning board, that's not asking the attorney to advocate for one side or the other, that's asking the attorney to provide an objective legal analysis.
She's sitting there representing us, as is. I'm not interested in having her.
No, no, I know that, I know that.
Because I think, yeah, it's gonna be tainted one side or another. This case law is on both sides, guaranteed.
Does she talk to Don?
She has the right to talk to Don, Don talks to her on other.
But just in general, with regard to the involvement of town council in this, has there been any conversation at all?
Well, we called Amy to be there at the last meeting, they scheduled it so that around Amy's schedule for January 31st, she couldn't make the second one, so she will be.
The next meeting was scheduled for her schedule.
And I didn't know if you wanted me to post the slot menu for that meeting, on the 31st.
It depends on what happens to Donnie.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, it doesn't make any difference whether you post it.
You can attend.
You know, you can always attend a meeting, but if you're gonna discuss things that have a future vote, you probably shouldn't be doing it, so the safe might be just to post it, I don't care.
I have no problem sending a letter recommending to Don Foster that we have a legal opinion drawn up by town council. Now, whether or not they decide to do it, I don't know if I feel comfortable enough leaving that in their hands. I mean, they're.
You've left it in their hands for years.
Right, and you know.
Yeah, but it's one thing if you get in a variance and put a garage at your house. This is 84 units in the middle of a water.
We made a gigantic issue out of 400 units in LeBaron, which is four times bigger than this.
Right, but what we found was that we couldn't go back and fix the problem, because the problem was too old and it predated us. This is a problem, or a potential problem, that we have an opportunity to, to get our arms around and maybe not allow to happen if it's, if it's gonna be an issue, and that's the difference. The timing is very different.
That's your side of the story, that's the opposite.
I understand, John, it's not, it's nothing personal, I get it, I mean, I don't necessarily think it's a bad project, but my concern is really the, the idea of, of, we're not gonna provide the necess, in my opinion, the necessary legal guidance for our zoning board to make an educated decision from a legal perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to have a response to this letter.
Right, so the question is, if, do you want to defer it to Don, who may or may not do it? But Don doesn't necessarily have the authority, I mean.
He does, he talks to, he talks to the attorney, Paul.
Yeah, but I want it in writing, and I want it in a memo, an objective memorandum that, that that does the point and counterpoint, the pros and cons of that representation. Because I think that that's the information that the zoning board should have prior to this decision. That that's the homework I would expect them to do before they vote on it. Is that something that you can support?
I, I would like to have a response for town council to this letter, whether or not the zoning board does anything with it.
But that's not up to us, and that's, and I'm comfortable with.
The response to that letter is different than what Aaron's asked.
I want a response, I want a response to this letter, and, you know, from the perspective of, does this have legal standing, what are the other side, you know, what are the other cases that would relate on the other side of this letter? I just want to have, if they've brought their attorney to the table, I want to bring ours too.
Do you have your attorney there? And if you want him to respond, get a letter from him, but as far as case law supporting one side or the other, you wouldn't do that if it was a private lawsuit.
Of course you would.
You'd do it in a, you would do it privately, and a lot of it doesn't get put in writing.
Are you concerned about a lawsuit if it does go into writing?
If it does what?
If it goes into writing and a decision's made possibly contrary to this, are you concerned about a lawsuit from that perspective, against the town, which then would be against the attorney?
There's no right answers. That's really the case, is you have as many cases for something as as many cases against something. I believe the attorney's told the town that what he wants to do is defensive. That's what I thought, I wasn't in those meetings, that's what I hear. So, I'm not in those meetings, if you want to meet with Amy in an executive session and ask her those questions, fine. But I thought they had been asked, and I thought she had answered them. I don't know that, I haven't been in those meetings.
Yeah.
I, I have a problem with, that back in the summertime, there was the conference calls made to the builder and his attorney, and he was welcomed, saying, if you like the idea, I will proceed with plans. At that point in time, we welcomed his idea. He then went and spent his money. So, what's changed that we don't welcome his idea now? The zoning hasn't changed, nothing's changed.
So, most builders, most, what? It has nothing to do with this. They didn't present that in the summer. They had some pie in the sky idea in the summer. Yeah, okay, it looks good, put it down, reduce it.
Pie in the sky was always 80 units.
For sake of this.
I'm not saying it wasn't. It was always 80 units.
So.
I understand.
So, why didn't we like that idea then, and we don't like the idea now?
Because the same reason why is that, is the, when you analyze the zoning, it, it doesn't make sense.
But you knew the zoning back in August, when you welcomed the guy with open arms.
No, I didn't, I happened to be driving my car and got, got piped into a conference call and talked for 10 minutes.
So, in the interest of not talking in circles, I'm comfortable with asking town council to write a similar letter in response to this letter, just talking about the legal merit, so that we have it in writing, so that we have our council, they have their council, and we have something to look at. Whether or not it actually goes to an opinion or not, if it just explains the different sides that could be there, I'm okay with that.
What you want in your draft is a memorandum of, of law that analyzes that.
That analyzes this letter, which is fine.
And it's what attorneys do, it's what this guy has provided something. To not have our side do that, to me, is, is, is not being, is not providing the legal guidance that the zoning board should have.
I'm okay with that, I think, just from the perspective, again, of, I wanted legal counsel to be there. If legal counsel didn't have a chance to go through this and respond, then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I don't know what happened during the summer, I just, what I don't like is if there's things that happened that went back and forth and nobody actually knows. I'd like to make sure that we know what town council has in response to this letter. That's all I'm asking. Do I, do I want to have it as a directive to, to the zoning board to engage? I would highly suggest that they do this.
I move that we authorize town council to write a memorandum of law in response to the November 14, 2018 document received to the town of Lakeville, zoning board appeals regarding the property located at 57 Long Point Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, Highland Terrace Nursing site.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those.
All those.
All right, agenda number four is to review a request from town clerk for this selectman to vote to approve the purchase of new voting machines, discontinue the use of the Optech 3P Eagles voting machines. We have a quote to purchase new voting machines for use in our 2019 elections. We received two bids, one for $20,800 from LHS Associates and one from ESNS for $22,291.60. Lil is hoping that we're going to approve the bid for the 2800, or 20,800, to purchase the four image cast precinct optical scanner and tablier voting machines from LHS Associates. So, what we have to do is vote to approve the discontinuance of the current machines prior to the spring of 2019 election. Here's that's assuming if we want to do this.
Did we approve this before, Rita?
We approved the money.
We approved the money? Did we talk about whose we were gonna buy back then? I thought we did. I thought we authorized who we were gonna buy.
No, we were gonna have to go up to bid, and what she had back then were in the vicinity of 26,000.
My only problem is to vote to discontinue something prior to the election. They come in and they don't work. I mean, she can go buy them, she can install them, but I find it very dangerous to want to dis, uh, discontinue a system, what if it comes in March 15th and none of it works? If it doesn't work, probably.
Well, we can hold off on that vote, but she will have it tested.
But we already approved, I guess I'm back to, we already approved this money.
You've officially approved the money, which awarding the bid, is what we're doing.
But you do that, that's your proof.
Wow.
That's your proof.
Ten, under 10,000.
Oh, my God.
We've been working. But that's, you know.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to discontinue any, I don't, I'm happy to award the bid, if that's what you think.
But I believe this is a state requirement that you would discontinue it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
I think that's smart.
I wouldn't do that.
We don't want to do that.
Just go buy it, set it up.
All right, so I move.
Don't throw the other one away.
For 2800 to, 20,000, hundred dollars to LHS Associates for the four image cast precinct optical scanner and tablier voting machines.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
The only discussion I have on that, too, is just so then, once these are purchased, then we'll have the ability to release the remaining funds from that capital article for 26,000 dollars for this. I could probably.
That's what we vote, because we, we voted it several years ago.
Right.
Because we thought we were gonna have to place them sooner.
Right.
And she may need some of that other, the remaining money.
Yeah, mainstall or something like that, okay, so we'll see where that goes.
And then prior to just the second meeting in March, you have to start a vote to discontinue once we know they're up and running. Is that okay?
That's not part of the motion, but that's.
Right, that's discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, so we have a drainage issue behind the new police station, Ted Williams Camp parking lot. I wanted to talk with you two about this, because this had come up in one of the police station building committee's meetings. And I thought about it, and I thought to myself, this has really nothing to do with the police station building committee. And that committee was, was kicking around ideas for how a repair would be funded, or where it would be funded from. And I thought, that's not really the charge of that group, it's really up, up to us to determine where we think how this problem should be handled, so that's why I wanted to talk about it. Nate and Jamie Bissonnet have been working on a strategy or a plan, I should say, an engineered plan for the purposes of what that drainage would look like. Do you have any information on the cost?
They did meet today, they're presenting it to park commission, Jamie's presenting it tonight for the karate studio and for the area behind the police station.
Okay.
We don't have the cost yet, but looking for them to get their sign off on the plans.
Yep.
But the plan, two different issues, the karate studio is a different issue than, than the parking lot, the soccer field. It shouldn't be a lot of money. When I say not a lot of money, it can't be $10,000. If you have the police station do it, it'll, it'll probably make your head spin. It shouldn't take anyone more than a couple of days to dig holes, put in tanks, and put in the catch basin and stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean, the question just is, where should it be paid from?
Well, if, I, if it was big money, it should come out of the police fund, because they displaced and the water runs over to there. But, because in my mind, it's less than $10,000. And we're gonna pay, we would pay less if our highway department or Sean Conway or, or Derek Maxim or some company fixed this. I think it's a $10,000 job. So, if I had the police station engineers do it, I bet you get a change out of $50,000.
I don't, no, they should, that was everything.
I think we just fix it, that's all.
Why don't we just delay this until we actually have quotes? Because it doesn't make any sense, in my opinion.
But it needs to be done.
But the plan is.
Soon.
It wouldn't go through the architect or the engineer of the police station building committee. We will get quotes from sole proprietors. We will purchase it, but it's where that money's gonna come from, John.
Well, let's wait until we know what.
Well, yeah, we're gonna take out all your stabilizations or something like that. If it was a lot of money, you know, to, to, if you transferred it out of the building fund, who are we paying? I mean, I suppose you could pay, you could pay someone else.
Well, yeah, I mean, but my intention, though, was to, to bring it up, because, not to make a decision tonight, but I knew that, it just dawned on me that it really wasn't the purview of the building committee, so I wanted to bring it up.
Right, but I think if it was big money, it almost, let's say it was $100,000 and that water's there because the building displaced the water and moved it over, it really should come out of the police station.
Sure.
$8 million. Yeah, and I might be back there if you tell me it's more than $10,000.
Right, right.
We might say, Jesus, you know, 20 needs to come out of that fund and we pay.
All right, so we'll kick that can down the road. Number six, Nye Hardin Street, we have the Big Copy, known proverbially as the Big Coffee. Everybody have a chance to look at this?
Yeah, that's the.
Next to Saga Sushi, it's gonna be a storage place, three stories.
It's a three-story, 20,000 square foot, 60,000 total, done by the, the owner, the Rocko. Not construction, Rocko Holdings, or whatever.
Any, no, no, no comment, Rita, for that? We have a temporary mobile home trailer permit for Five Alden Road. I move that we approve it as requested.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Is this, is it really a year and a half, 18 months? Or is it supposed to expire?
July, it should be July 2019. Six months.
2019, I mean, 2020?
Should be 20, should be.
Yeah, six-month permit, right?
We'd like to do.
I'm usually pretty good the first couple of months, and then around April, I revert back to the prior years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bridgewater would like to renew their contract with us, or I should say, the Lakeville Animal Shelter for housing stray dogs. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Kenneth Upham Senior would like to be reappointed as a constable. All right, I'll go back to it. All those, that's so moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
David Frey would ask, has asked us to appoint Harold Marshall as an assistant animal control officer. So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, do we need to authorize this position as a special municipal?
Yeah, I've got to call into Michelle, I'm not sure if it's the reserve, which position.
Which one, if it's the animal control officer or the reserve police officer. Okay, so before he can get paid, we have to make sure that's.
And why don't we just say.
We did that before, for all people.
That it's, that whatever it is.
I'll put it on your next meeting to vote that.
To ratify it or something?
To, no, on the special.
To specify? Okay. I was gonna say, if he has to be, then we, then it is, and if he, if he doesn't, then he isn't.
It's which position, I don't know.
Right, right, yeah, all right. Any further discussion? Here, not all is okay? Okay, agenda number 11 is to take a look at some dates in February and March for our meetings. So we have February 11, February 25, March 11, and March 25. Those work for every?
Okay.
All right, so that is one in. All right, so that is when we meet then.
Do we, do we wanna meet the 25th if you have the elections? Are the elections the first?
Yes, April 11.
Because then we usually meet, well, we'll delay the April 2nd meeting, just delay that a week or something.
Well, yeah, because this doesn't even include budget meetings, we're gonna have to start doing like February, so we'll have a lot more than these, but at least we have placeholders for all the other stuff to get done, maybe?
Yeah.
But yeah, maybe we'll end up moving that 25th to the week before, possibly, depending on, you know, we'll probably have Monday, Thursdays for budget meetings, I'd assume. We should probably figure that out.
Rita, Rita asked you a little bit earlier, do we have any school budget increments yet? I mean, it's all early in the process, we don't have ours back yet.
Yeah, no, I have a regional FinCon meeting on January 17th, I've asked for, I think that's the day after the school committee meeting, because I asked for an update on the contractual obligation increase on the budget this year and the debt schedule for this school.
Instead of a 1% loss here, it becomes a 2%.
Right. It'll be, my guess is it's about 700,000.
Oh, yeah.
Did we hear from Bernie about scheduling with them?
Oh, we wanted to talk about that, schedule in the day meeting. Get some dates from the board.
Yeah, so that's another thing to throw out there, is that we wanna try to do that.
I was gonna ask for that old, old business.
Okay, all right.
Do it now if you don't.
I'm prepared myself. Well, hang on, yeah, let's just stick with this. So meeting minutes, we have November 28. And that was it. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, changes?
Yeah.
All right. I move that we approve them as drafted.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have some new business. Review and vote on the 2019 District Local Technical Assistance, DLTA, funding request through SERP Ed. Oh, and acronyms are great. So we have it. SERP Ed gave us this thing, if we want to apply for funding, it will help us in obtaining the million dollar included in the Senate Bond Bill for infrastructure upgrades.
This was, if you remember when we met with SERP Ed, for them to put the plan together for Secretary Ash for.
Yeah. I, I don't think that this makes any sense, honestly, because the property owner has to put together a plan.
So can we have a brief?
A concrete plan, that was very clear at that meeting.
Can, can we have a small, like, what happened at that meeting? I have no idea. I'd like to just get a little bit of information on that meeting.
Yeah, so we met with, Norm was there, and Katie, and Roberts, and one of his aides, and then what, three people from SERP Ed?
Yes.
Grant came as one of them.
John Sullivan.
Yeah, I mean, they're all people that we've met, the SERP Ed guys. And the consensus around the room was, if the property owner doesn't have a concrete plan that includes raising the building, or buildings, there's probably not a likelihood for it getting off the ground. I mean, that seemed to be pretty clear to me. In fact, they all said it. So I don't really think it makes any sense to pursue a grant to research funding when we don't have that from the property owner. Now, subsequent to that meeting, I talked with the property owner, and I explained that to him. And he said, well, I just, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do yet. I said, okay, well, when you're sure, let us know. We have, I think, four years, or maybe five years?
Five.
So this is not a rush in any way, shape, or form, in my opinion. If this gets done next year, because the property owner has a plan that supports that idea, and that's really, in my recollection, how it was left. Now, Grant did mention that he had this, they did mention the idea of this, but I think it's completely premature, because what are they gonna do? They're gonna come up with this plan, and then it's gonna say, but the whole plan is contingent on a strategy from the developer of which it doesn't exist. So that's my opinion.
Does SERP Ed get paid out of some grant to do this?
Well, this is what we would be paying them for, because I sort of took it, too. The other part of that was going to Middleborough C on the sewer line part, getting infrastructure for other properties along Main Street, including the Bowman Alley and Dewey's Restaurant.
And that sewage coming down Main Street?
It is there already.
Right.
And so I'm now with Middleborough, and there's two prompts to that, that you, right now, Chris Pack was gonna send me the information that they can't tie into forced sewer main without doing other items. And the other part, he wasn't sure, on their SRF loan to upgrade their sewer treatment plan, which that was over 20 million, I believe, that they could not expand. But like Grant said, you know, those SRF loans, that criteria can be changed if it's gonna help regionally economic development.
Right, so there's an awful lot of work there, and if the developer doesn't have a plan, none of it can happen.
Well, that's only for that million dollars to be released, you're talking about, you know, if there was a plan in place to just move sewer down Main Street to some of the other properties.
But that's not what this is.
No, but this could be this, because this is, you're really looking for a DLTA grant usage. So if there is something that would promote that, that that could be what you apply for.
And where it does take, we weren't gonna apply this year because the plan, Secretary Ash listed the plan in April or May. We knew it was gonna take another year, but at least if we secured the funding.
Yeah, if you, if you, I mean, I'm not trying to be cute here or cynical, but what do I care? I'm not even gonna be here. If you guys wanna throw this spaghetti in the fridge and see if it sticks, you wanna walk and do it.
No, but if we get the DLTA grant and there'll be a deadline on it, and it's not used, it's not used.
Right, exactly. And that's what we've used anyways, to do the studies up and down Main Street, to do work with the master plan. So, I mean, every year we apply for something with this, so we might as well, if we don't, unless there's something else that comes to mind, that's something we'd rather use that money for, whether or not we get it is another story. We seem to always get it, but.
But you're talking about a grant for SERP Ed to, to, to work on this stuff?
To work, to work, but I think it's more so, and I like the concept of working on, trying to see if there is a possibility to provide sewage and what it would be coming down from Middleborough, so be a regional grant to kind of work with Middleborough to see if we can get them to.
But I'd be the last to run sewer to Dewey's, who that's been for sale for the day since it closed.
Right.
And it's still there.
Right.
So I'm not gonna run a sewer line.
No, but somebody that doesn't want to sell it. But that's the thing, is they, they would need the same plan for wherever it's going. And that's a requirement of Middleborough to, to, to do with sewer line anyway.
Right, but I think that.
As an engineering plan.
But somebody needs to start it. I guess the question is, is it even possible? What would be the steps? And that's what they could do, right, is they could kind of work to say, if this was the case, here's your comprehensive plan, if it never happens, it never happens, but at least they're working on it on the side, we have nothing to do with it, per se. It's not a lot of our heavy investment, they're just working on it for regional transportation purposes, and I, I don't have a problem with applying for it from that perspective, because.
Yeah, you know, sometimes people like to chase windmills. I get it.
Tilt with windmills.
So, yeah, I mean, if that's, I mean, like I said, sure.
I think it's okay for me to apply.
Well, we should vote.
Well, but we, but let's say we apply and we get it. Are they, is then SERP Ed gonna do something for it?
Yeah, they'll, you know, they'll.
They won't get paid unless they do something for it.
Yeah, they'll provide a, a, a plan that, that is contingent upon certain things happening that I predict may never happen.
Right, but at least it gives an outline for what could potentially happen.
Keeps the SERP Ed people working, and that's not part of the mass, the plan?
Right, no.
Part of that area.
No.
All right, so I move that we authorize the town administrator to apply for set of grant.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town hall redesign, tile is coming in, that's good. Community compact grants, HR grant, putting together a hiring policy, that's good stuff. Performance reviews are completed, that's good. Read is, is set for the 28th of January. There's an update on the new police station, we have a budget here, and a change order log through 11/27. We have a, a meeting next week on this, so there'll be more information than, I mean, this week, Thursday. I actually had an opportunity to tour the building, and I'm trying to set up a tour for you guys as well, because I know that you'd love to see it, but they wanna wait until they're a little bit further along, because it is a little bit hazardous in there, there's a lot of trip hazards and stuff all over the place. But it's really impressive, there's really a lot going on inside the building that you don't see from the outside, so hopefully within the next few weeks, they'll, they'll get it completed, you'll replace where we'll invite the board of selection and the rest of the building committee as well, and we'll get over there and check it out, so.
The, the change orders on that little, this summary here?
Yep.
So the change order proposal summary, we're already doing those, I think, the, the gypsum board and the ceiling, the outbuilding? Are we, are we doing the 12,003, 7, and 5,000? Are we doing those? I don't know that we are or we aren't. I didn't, I didn't see them on the change order yet. Did we authorize those?
Which ones?
The, this group here.
Yeah, well, those were under the threshold, so the, the building committee just authorized them.
Okay, so, so they're authorized by the building commission?
Correct.
But those are not on this update report.
Right. Right, that's where I got them.
Yeah, they'll be on the next one. Yeah, they'll be on the next one.
And then the, the pending changes, it didn't look significant. The impound lot behind the outbuilding, you're already, is, you're already fenced in the police station, or you fenced in the access to that back?
Right, but the fence was gonna go right up to the building, so the idea is that they just square off the fence to the lot more, so that they have a space behind the, the outbuilding that they can put stuff, more storage.
So it's really just extending the fence?
Yes.
And putting in.
And putting in cameras, and again, some cameras. Because they wanna have an access around the back.
Oh, I thought, I thought you just fenced it around and not bothered to have gates back, and you stood it. We just stirred it and unpacked it.
Yeah, I think it also involves some crushed stone or something.
Yeah, not paved.
Yeah, it's not gonna be.
See what, see what that ends up being.
Yeah.
And then the road signage, the, the, well, the Mass DOT curb cut modifications on Bedford Street, have you gone back to the DOT and said, we're using that entrance? And are they asking us to change the entrance on Bedford Street? Yes and no. When we got together with the Department of Transportation.
Didn't they say?
Division 5, I said we weren't doing that drive.
Yeah, I wanna make sure they.
We then continued with the drive.
Yeah.
So now, you, you have to go back to them, the curb cut modification on Bedford Street. Don't save that to the last minute.
Right, yeah, that's something worth, worth putting on the agenda for.
And that was on, I thought that was on Jamie Bissonnet's agenda to work with the DOT, I thought.
Right, and I think it's still outstanding.
Because you don't wanna start messing around by that road, and I see that we are, but if they're gonna make you change it, there's some way here about digging it up across there so we can do fiber, but you might as well find out if they're gonna make you change it, because you don't wanna dig it up, patch it.
Put it back together.
And then dig it all up again.
Change the whole thing.
You've gotta stop beating around the bush on using that entrance. You've gotta go back to the Department of Transportation and say, we're using.
And I believe Jamie has, but I'll.
Yeah, well, you're.
You really need to get that, because that has to do with some of the modifications you've already authorized to do, and you're gonna double pay them. Road signers, electronic signage boards, we're gonna have electronics sign for the police station?
Yeah, it's for the basis of Amber Alerts and announcements that they wanna make, that kinda stuff.
Do you know what the school one was?
No.
25,000 dollars.
Yeah, well, this one will be 50 then.
Okay.
But yeah, so I'm hoping at our next meeting I'll have more information, because again, you know, it's been a month since we've met, but I did visit the site and it's looking great, and there'll be more on getting you guys in there.
The last with the irrigation system for the monitors, are we digging wells or we're taking off of the pipe, or we're taking it off the ton, ton water?
I don't remember what we decided, if anything, the one thing we wanted to do is do that ourselves, we didn't wanna have it as part of the cost.
We were gonna have them.
Project.
Grate it, grass it, and leave town.
Yeah.
Because.
So I don't remember.
Right, you don't want them strung around with the site irrigation. However, hopefully we're not putting brass the other sides of the drive. Again, now you've got the electric, that's gotta go onto the electric and the water. So as long as you're, you can melt it, but if you're doing by the police station, you gotta be careful, that'll just, just have the grass, it'll figure the irrigation out.
Yeah.
But the irrigation here, it's like 5,000 dollars.
Yeah.
So it should be a little piece alone?
Yeah, right, the smaller the better. Okay, so is there anything else we need to talk about?
If I may, just a little business, a couple things. This afternoon I received an email from Matt Schu at Beta. They had a meeting with Mass DOT on the 25% comments, and I did forward it to the board. Middleborough G and E does not have a department to, for doing easements for right-of-way, so he's not quite sure how the government will forward with that, whether, you can read the email, and Aaron, you can probably let me know whether or not to put, have, schedule a meeting with Beta on what we wanna do for Middleborough G and E easements.
So they don't have anybody that can do it?
Yeah, they don't have a department.
So how do we review this?
Polling here?
No.
It's, it's like.
Yeah. Since we attended a comment resolution meeting with Mass DOT on December 12 to review some of the 25% comments, during that meeting, the District 5 Utility Engineer informed us that he had met with MG and E, who's responsible for utility pole relocation, and that MG and E does not maintain any right-of-way staff to acquire the necessary easements for utility pole relocations. Based on this, the town will need to acquire any permanent easements needed for poles, guy wires, or aerial easements. To give you an approximate idea of the areas in question, we've added these locations in red to the attached graphic, which we've previously transmitted to you for the necessary town takings and permanent easements. It's possible, as the design advances, that some of these areas may be able to be reduced slightly through redesigned project components. In order to schedule the design public hearing, Mass DOT will need to see a resubmission of the right-of-way plan showing the additional easements, and a resubmission of the utility plan said, so that the 25% site utility meeting can take place.
And I made copies of that, and I must have left it on my desk for tonight.
I got, I got the, I got the email.
Yeah, it just came, it was like 5:00 something.
But they're still paying for the tiles and the wires, they don't have the right to take the lien, that's the only issue. Or is that not true? Because we were told that they were handling the whole thing, and this was a piece of cake.
But that, they don't have to pay all of that, but now they don't have.
They don't have anybody that can facilitate this from their perspective, so how do we They don't have anybody that can facilitate this from their perspective, so how do we do it?
And when we relocated 79, we have CVSs now, I can remember. I ran around for Verizon to every, you know, their, their staff prepared everything, but they needed it designed. And I thought at that time, Middleborough GNE, when all the poles got relocated right up Main Street to Bridge Street, that they took care of that, so this is news to me, so.
Maybe we should just talk to Jackie Crowley and say, Senator Populous, and say, is any of this really true?
Yeah, maybe, like, who can help us with this?
Yeah, see, there's gotta be somebody that can help us with it.
We're just gonna meet and go, what do we do?
I mean, they do it all the time, I mean, they put polls, I mean, they just put polls on, on School Street, and those on the developer's property.
That's a good idea.
So somehow they got the right, they put telephone poles on my property.
We have that easement, the town has the easement anyways, right? On 79, who has the easement for the utility poles then?
It's Middleborough GNE.
But yet they can't, there's a lot of paperwork.
I don't get it.
For easements.
Didn't they have an easement that was?
We need to meet with Middleborough Gas and Electric over that lot. Didn't they give us something to sign, and the notary draft was like 10 years old? Remember getting that?
That was for the, for the new police station.
Yeah, it was Middleborough GNE though. See, they don't, they don't even have the right, they have the old notary stuff from like 2004 on there. Like, nobody's, they had a mimeograph to spit the thing out.
They have a new gentleman, Ed Rand, who had easel, and sent it to me, so they've had a turnover.
The Ed Rand?
Was Rand the radio guy? He was the radio guy.
Is he on Rand, or?
Is it Ed Rand?
He was the radio guy.
Maybe John Rand. Anyways.
It's gonna make for an interesting hearing. Poll here.
Yeah, alright, so yeah, I just followed that, followed it to Jackie, and said, "Jackie, what is this?"
And then, the only, the other thing was, they give me a couple of dates that the board would like to meet, or one date for community paradigm for a day meeting. And then, talking with Betsy too, maybe have meeting executive session afterwards to go over a couple of non-union positions.
Yeah, the other thing too, January 28th is Monday, I can't make that meeting unfortunately. So we're gonna have to, unless you guys wanna meet together.
Why don't we just do the 29th, Tuesday? That's the Rogers event at night, right?
For what? I don't. About as subtle as a heart attack, but yeah, that's why I'm not gonna be there.
Well, I would like to go to that event too, so.
You want last year too, once I go this year?
The Rogers event?
Bittersweet Farms event.
Oh.
That's on the 28th, yeah.
Yeah, that's the 28th, so.
Yes, if we all go, so, the 29th, the Tuesday instead, would be our meeting?
Yep.
I'll see if the senior center should be available, because ConCon meets second and fourth. So.
Senior Center. I could do this Friday, I think. John, what's your, do you free any time?
I can usually do the mornings, some of the mornings, well, I'm talking early mornings, bus duty, but you might have those too, so, no, they're fine. But were they ready? They were gonna be on our agenda the, the next meeting, not, not the Middleborough one, but our next scheduled meeting, they were gonna come to.
Community paradigm, I thought it was gonna be a separate meeting.
Well, but are they ready then? I mean, if you made it this Friday, Mitzi, I don't know if they're ready yet. But this Friday's fine, but I don't know if they're ready.
I can't do it till the early afternoon on Friday.
Okay.
If that works.
I have to just do a transportation of a child at 3:30 to?
Do, do we meet with them in executive session?
No.
No.
So, you're gonna go over their brochure, you're gonna decide on the education, the salary?
Do you mean early afternoon?
Anytime after lunch. I have something I have to do mid-morning, so I'm not gonna be around until, you know, 12:30.
Just make sure you send me an email when you pick the date and time.
Or 1 o'clock, or whatever.
That's all.
Do you wanna?
I'm all set, I just gotta remember.
Yeah. The only other thought I had was, on the 14th, where we've got that meeting with the Middleborough Board of Selectmen, like, could we meet at 5:00 or something, possibly, you know?
It's next Monday.
4:00, you know, so, because we're already kind of meeting later that night, so it's kind of like, if 4 o'clock works.
Right, that's okay, just asking how long we want.
Yeah, you figure that's what, an hour?
And then, we'll probably be another half an hour, maybe?
Yeah, see if they're ready, because I think he was talking about the 20.
Okay, so two hour meeting, if we did 4 o'clock?
You don't need two hours to do all that stuff.
The executive session, non-union stuff?
That's if the chair is sleeping, and I'm not gonna be sleeping that night, I'm gonna be banging the table. I don't wanna be in a two hour meeting and then go to Middleborough for god knows how long.
Well, if you could grab dinner or something.
Yeah, of course, but you're not gonna.
It might not take that long.
It shouldn't take that long, is my point.
But then we can put some of the, the executive session stuff on the January 29th meeting.
Watch that.
Okay.
The police chief's got a few, the deputy, I mean, the fire chief.
Alright. Well, yeah, talk to me about them, and if, I think we can plow through them, we'll try to do them earlier, but if not, what do you do on 29th?
Did you schedule a meeting this Friday, or Wednesday or something?
He hasn't called me back yet.
Send me a notice.
Brian's gonna be in tomorrow, and he was gonna give you some dates.
Alright, so we're gonna shoot for Monday then, not Friday?
The 14th at like 4?
Okay.
Okay, I'll call Bernie, or I'll help Corinda.
And we'll try to do some of that executive session stuff, because trying to pick another day for me to do like a day meeting, it's gonna start to get.
Yeah, no, no, we'll try to plow through everything that we can, that's, that's.
We support some fire, okay.
Yeah. Alright, anything else? Nothing? Let's adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? We are adjourned, so, thanks everyone.